Ready? Good afternoon, City of Indio Public Arts and Community Services Joint Commission Meeting for Tuesday, August 12th at 5:31, I will call this meeting to order. Can I get a roll call, please? Commissioner Maruho?
Present.
Commissioner Prudhomme?
Present.
Commissioner Newmeyer?
Present.
Vice Chairperson Armenta?
Here.
Chairperson Sanchez?
Here.
And for Community Services, Commissioner Vissenyo?
Here.
Commissioner Slater?
Here.
Commissioner Phillips? And Vice Chairperson Orthean. Pledge of Allegiance, can I get a volunteer, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, public comment for items not on the agenda.
We don't have any.
Okay. Item number four, presentation by local artists and/or art organizations, we see there are none. Action items, 5.1. Leila?
So tonight, we have City Manager Brian Montgomery to provide the presentation, and I'm gonna sit back and enjoy.
Great, thank you, I apologize for sitting here, probably should go to the podium, I have a little injury on my foot that I'm playing with, but if the team can put forward the, put up the PowerPoint presentation, you've probably certainly read the staff report that Leila put together, and I appreciate you coming together as a joint commission, that was the request of the City Council that we seek your input on both the 9/11 memorial and Veterans Memorial. The City Council identified Miles Avenue Park as a preferred location, but there are a number of options within the park, including one that the artist is interested in recommending. So with your input, we'd like to bring that forward to the City Council next Wednesday, then they would make a decision. Relative to the 9/11 memorial, the plan, if all goes well with your discussion this evening and the City Council's action on Wednesday, we could have a groundbreaking ceremony at the site that is selected on 9/11. So that could be the city's celebration and memorial, at the same time saying that at a future date, or in the near future, by the time the next 9/11 comes forward, the memorial would be there. So, not that we're rushed necessarily, but it would be nice to make that event special. If, for example, you this evening, we can't come to some court sort of consensus, nor can the council, then we would just put off that groundbreaking. But again, in the staff report that Leila prepared, there's a little bit of reminder of what the 9/11 memorial is, those of you on the Arts Commission that were here at the time are well aware, and I believe it's up on your screens. This had originally been approved, recommended by the Arts Commission, approved by the City Council, to be located on the corner where the former fire station was, on Dr. Carrion and Jackson. With the movement forward a little more quickly than we had anticipated with the Police Administration Headquarters Building, it was determined by those working, as well as the City Council, that perhaps that was not the best location for this memorial in hindsight. So, that's where we're at today, and I apologize, this is not... I just need to, oh, I need, maybe I need to aim it, I'm sorry. This is the night view, if I recall it to some degree, I think each one of those perforations that would come at night would represent those that lost their lives on 9/11. Of course, you remember that, and for those of you on the Community Services Commission, we own a piece of night of the Twin Towers, steel. It's been in our possession for quite some time, it just has not yet been placed in a memorial. But you see the circular approach, that diameter, it says 20 to 25 feet. Again, this is the site over at the Public Safety Campus that had been originally approved, and now we're looking at another, another option. Before we get into that specific option related to the 9/11 memorial, the thought and discussion with the council is that we have the desire out there for a Veterans Memorial, so could there be some synergy, proximity relating to the two memorials? And this is where we'd love to have your input, and we'll pass that along to the City Council. Here are some examples of what could be done for the Veterans Memorial. You just saw the 9/11, that's already been approved by way of design. The Veterans Memorial has not been designed yet. Not quite the urgency with regard to the design at this point, but here are some ideas, you see the pillars, some cities typically, it's the branches of the military, everyone kind of does it a little bit differently. A few of these I've been a part of, they can be very simple like this, yet attractive and meaningful, so just kind of roll through these before we get some input. Here's one, for example, where they're, the seal of the branches of the service are up on a wall, here they are to the right, the seals are there with the flag of each one of the branches of the service. In our heat and sun, perhaps those flags won't last as long, it may not be the best concept, but something to consider. These are even more simple, so it's one large plaque monument, you know, black granite or other type of material, one of them adds an eagle, but has all of the branches of the service on one particular memorial. So, those are some examples, this one's in West Covina, might be my favorite, just as an example, it's very clean, and again, fairly simple and relatively inexpensive to construct. I believe there's one more. Here perhaps, that looks like it's concrete and it's stained, that's actually stone, but unfortunately, it does not have the best look, but if something like this were done, you know, we'd want to pick a rock material that had, you know, would properly respect the branches of the military. So, I don't know if there's any thought, Madam Chair, how you'd like to just allow everyone to provide some input on what they would like to see in a Veterans Memorial, knowing the 9/11 has already been decided, and after that discussion, we would then go into what, perhaps where could these go? So however you'd like to start yourself, or go around the room and perhaps discuss the Veterans Memorial first, and we will all as staff have our pens and pencils ready to jot down the notes and comments that you're providing.
Do we want to start on the send and move this way?
For, for my thought would be considering that we're gonna get one of the steel beams be placed at one of the memorials, right, with everything else that we kind of see here, with representation of the Army, Marines, Navy, Air Force, and all that, right? I would, I would like to see it go on the corner of the Miles Park, because it looks like that would be more viewable, it would improve the aesthetics of the community, we're not interfere with the parks, right, because we still have fields there that could be used for children to play around, people walking the area from the pathways could actually go there and visit it as well. Another consideration that I could see to help probably even fund, fund this project would be getting those stones, the pavers with the veterans' names on it. I have family that are veterans, I wouldn't mind purchasing a stone, $50, $100, and that would help put their branch, their name, people who served, people who passed away, I mean, I think that would also help the city with raising funds to even improve the structures if we can. Those would be my suggestions.
I'll just jump in every once in a while, is it maybe helpful? This lower left-hand corner, those are actually pavers, the horizontal service there, and that's exactly what was done there. So of maybe, I don't know if there were, you know, 1,500 pavers, maybe 600 or 700 were, were the bricks. That's actually one where I served previously, I will tell you that the, kind of the logistics and administration of getting the money and selecting the brick and checking the name and the spelling, it probably was not a huge fundraiser, but it helped bring greater meaning and participation in the project, yeah. So, just as while we're there, relative to these type of monuments, is anything kind of catch your eye of these kind of examples? This would be different than the 9/11 memorial, more for the veterans, any of these?
Yeah, I enjoy, I enjoy the pillars, to be honest with you.
Kind of that?
It looks very clean, I could already see the beam, you know, by where the flag is supposed to be at, maybe also putting a flag, or two flags somewhere that represents the City of Indio, and then the United States flag, so two flags there, or maybe three, I don't know, choose a side, but you do need seating, right? Because if you're gonna have traffic, you're gonna have people that are gonna be there in memory of their family members, right? And putting those bricks, even though you say it might not generate a profit, you still have work, now they have somewhere to go besides memorial, if they're in Virginia, or that they're, well, they could now still go here.
Well, and the grandkids and great-grandkids are remembering the service of their...
Absolutely.
Which we're doing some, to somebody with the current military personnel and with the military banners, but this would be in stone to that end. Okay, I think that's, that's great input, you just want to go around the rooms?
All right. I'm personally a fan of the one that's up now, the West Covina Veterans Memorial. I do like the simplicity of it, as well as the built-in seating area, as Councilmember Vissenyo, sorry, Commissioner Vissenyo mentioned. With regard to the location, is that something that we're gonna discuss as well for this one?
I, I just suggested that if we could kind of get the look, because I think that might, once there's a consensus on look, that might help you on location, which we would then do as a second phase of our discussion today.
Okay, yeah, I was just thinking, if that is something that had been discussed already, just because we're kind of be trying to identify where we want to place the 9/11 memorial, and taking like an overview of the park, there's lots of features on the, I want to say the east end of it, where we have, yeah, the east end, where we have like the restrooms and the other features, and on the left side, there's mainly just like a walking path. So, my recommendation would be to add more features to the left side of the park, and have it be more either veterans or military themed, so that way we can continue to build off of that. As far as the other, I guess my favorite, second favorite mural was the one with the pillars, I don't remember, I don't recall the city, but it was just like really simple and at the bottom right one, yeah.
That one, that one looks really nice at night.
Yeah.
It's in Walnut Creek, California.
Walnut Creek, yeah, that one, that one's super cool, and I imagine most people would be hanging out the parks at night, just due to the heat, so that one seems like a really awesome feature that people could go take pictures at and just spend time at, granted if there was seating, of course.
Thank you.
I prefer the seals over just the names, like the actual seal, yeah, and I really liked the one where it was a different branch on each angle, right there in the middle, the black.
Kind of the hexagon type of thing?
Yes, I like that one, but I also like the individual pillars, as long as it's tall, not short.
Thinking, those I would guess there are probably seven or eight feet, eight feet maybe?
Okay, so just for clarification, we did decide on the 9/11, it's going to be where it's marked and not mapped, right?
Yeah, I, no, I apologize, and I, what's been approved is how it looks.
Just how it looks, just not the location.
So now, we're trying to find a location, and I think the guidance, the guidance for the council is, let's put them kind of close to each other, but let's be strategic at Miles Avenue Park. So while the design's decided here, we need to find a location for both. So again, maybe I was too linear, but to kind of get an idea, a little bit of a consensus on the memorial, Veterans Memorial, then we'll go to the next slides and show some options of where could both of these kind of go.
Okay.
But, because I think, you know, if there was a different design desired on, on the Veterans Memorial, it might impact location.
Got it, I see what you mean.
And something, well, I should have, I'm sorry, the issue of, of the seating, and these are, both of them are solemn places, right? And Miles Avenue Park, we're trying to activate it more, in fact, now we have Little League baseball, and there's a lot of football going, not baseball, football, soccer's going on there. So, I think you would want to, you know, away from that, and the seating and kind of the feel of more of like a cemetery than a, than a playground, just in, in concept. Are there any of these that you kind of like?
Yeah, I was gonna add to that, I really like the, the one that was just mentioned, the Walnut Creek, I really love the idea of having the tall pillars, and, and I really like the idea of adding the seals, not just the names, but the seals. I love the way that it looks. It looks like it's in the sidewalk, right?
It's right alongside the road, and the benefit of that is not everyone gets out and walks, but every day, they drive by it.
Yeah, I really like that idea of having it facing Arabia, facing Arabia, I feel like it's just, I know that the other one is facing, or is pointing towards the inside of the park, and I really feel like it should face more of like Arabia streets, since there's more traffic there, and the lighting on the floor, too, I, I think that that would make it look very nice.
Yeah, this one does not have, that doesn't have the pavers with names, but you can see how that could be implemented there.
Right. Those are my thoughts.
I just had questions, because we're talking about the overall look or feel, are we still intending, is this gonna be a public arts project, it's gonna be from funding or from city funding, or?
I'm not sure you have enough money.
I know that we don't, but...
But we would take your recommendation one way or the other, and certainly, there's an artistic component, that's perhaps why the council wanted to involve Community Services, it's, it's a hybrid project, right?
I'm asking for the, are we gonna go out for an RFP or RFQ, are we gonna, are we going to sort of pick right now and here, kind of the look we're going for, and, and just have that done?
That's a great question, and you've been through this so many times, I think if you had the look, we could have the option, and you might want to recommend, we could go kind of ourselves, kind of find somebody to help us kind of sketch it and get it ready, or here artists, because we could put out an RFQ, here's kind of our concept, submit your ideas, so either one of those works for us.
I mean, it sounds like so far, the consensus is the pillar look, and I do like that overall, the seal I think looks good. The question of material, something that's gonna last well, that's not necessarily painted, the concrete, I think, is a good idea, especially with cast, like, that's a pebble look, I don't know if that's stone, or if that's exposed to aggregate, those, those are, I think, are all, you know, interesting looks, at least very textural, as opposed to like, say, the black granite, or this stone that looks like it's been stained. And then, as far as the further discussion about placement, when we talk about that, I, I do think that both of these should be away from the playground. Right now, I think the artist for the 9/11 memorial's got his lined up with our soccer goal, and I, what I don't want to see hap- happen is people kicking balls into all these things, and, and, you know, impacting park operations, and it should be solemn, like you said, that's the good word, you know, and it hopefully shaded, if there's an area that could have, you know, shade trees planted around it with, you know, benches, or an area to congregate and have, you know, but we'll talk about that when we get to location. Right, that's more of that.
I also like the West Covina one, but I also like this one you have up, there's veterans, it just depends on where we're gonna put it, to me, because I might pick one with the pillars, but all of a sudden, the space that we want to put it in, it might not fit there, so, or it might look out of place, and that's why, to me, I'd like to find out, figure out where we'd like to put it, and then I can, I can go around what one would look better in, in that spot.
Maybe there's a little bit of both considerations.
Right, because the West Covina one, I love the pillars, I love this Veterans Memorial, I love the, I, I like those two, if the space doesn't fit something that is, we were talking about being solemn, this feels like somewhere you could, it's big enough to where you could have an, an event, an opening, and, and that to me.
Come up, huh? In my opinion, I think part of this whole procedure and process in regards to a selection of, of a memorial, you know, I'm kind of like to see first, but then again, that wasn't decided, the locations, because I, I saw the schematics dealing with the 9/11 memorial, and in those, if you know that the park itself, Miles Avenue runs east-west, Arabia Street runs north-south, so if you're talking in terms of location, to me, as John says, you really need to, in my opinion, you need to think about the locations, as how you're gonna use both the memorial for 9/11 and the Veterans Memorial for the military. I, I agree that they should be together. Now, as far as picking, yes, the pillars look, I think they're beautiful, I think the, the seals are beautiful, I think the way that you, you might do something with it is, is based on, I, I see the one that, there's a couple that have half-circles, and in, or as they would say, 180-degree half-circle, a diameter type thing, because the, the 9/11 carries the same... Yeah, and so, that's why, to me, location is more important, because if, once you know the location, as John says, then we can really figure out what pillars, if we do choose pillars. I kind of like the one that some mentioned in regards to the, the pillars that have the nightlights, it's down the walking street. I want to envision, in my opinion, that, that street, walking street on, on Miles, with the park there, can you imagine that walking street right by, as you go through, and then you head east to the museum, and you have that whole walking space? To me, that, that can really blend and be able to really show the lights, especially at night like this, and people, I think, would like it. I'm not sure, something like this, you can hide it somewhere in the park, but it's like everything else, you just gotta see where it's gonna be, in my opinion, location. So, pillars, I, I kind of like, same as everybody else that mentioned pillars, depending on the size of the pillar, the height of pillar, will be, to me, will be determined by what John says, the location. If we have these, and then we can't find a good location, then we'll have to change the schematics on the, on the, on the pillar itself, those, those, itself, so, that's my take, is I can envision something like the one at night, the one on the right, just walking down that street, Miles over here to the right. The other thing you gotta be careful with, in, in my opinion, again, location, is when people start parking their cars along the street, especially off Arabia, which runs north and south, and if you put one in that location where it was set, you're gonna get cars parked there, in the parking lot, there is a parking lot, but along, and you, and, and you'll miss the significance of the lighting feature when, when, when people drive by. To me, that's, that's all about art, the light, the depth, the strength of, of that. So, again, it's a food for thought, location, I believe should be something you should consider first, that draws to me what the pillars, or whatever part of the Veterans Memorial will dictate.
Sure, and that's a great point, if, if the decision is made that it be up against the road, I think we would want to designate that as no parking, you know, out of the respect of the, of the, the good news is, Madam Chair, unless there are other comments, we can go to location, the, I'm pretty confident that any of these designs will fit, so that's the good news, but we'll go to that point. I do know in the packet, the architect, or, sorry, the artist for the 9/11 memorial had selected something up against the museum, a little bit north of these other areas, but I did want to highlight, this is before my time, but say five, six years ago, there was a master plan done that the Community Services Commission reviewed, and it was submitted for a grant for the park, and in the yellow, it's a little hard to read, but years and years ago, it was identified as a location for memorials, so we're kind of coming full circle. I'll be honest with you, I didn't know that was the case, when I saw this, wow, they had already thought about this, and it makes some good sense. So that is where one conceptual design indicated where memorials would be, and, and if you're finding yourself where we're at here, it's, it's Miles there, is the east-west road, and Arabia's the north-south, and then that circles behind the existing parking, so there is not parking on the west side of Arabia now, but there is that parking lot that you see just south of where that designated memorial spot, spot is.
Does the city plan on building or utilizing that space for a parking lot in the future?
Well, that was in the master plan, that would be up to, certainly would make a, an impact on where this is eventually placed, so certainly, if you decide to put the memorial on that side, there wouldn't be a parking lot there, but I, I don't know of any immediate plans. We're fortunate to have the parking to the north there for the activities now, and as the Burger Building, the existing charter school building that's there, would likely eventually come down, there'd be even more parking, so I'm not sure we would need it, but it's a good question, and, and a lot of what you see here is not built. We did put, put the dog park over on the west side, but you see here, it was identified to go on the, the east side, north of the museum, so we did make a few adjustments there. So here's just the example, so this is that existing parking lot I referred to, it looks like as if that dirt area is a bioswelle, like it carries some water, it does not to any significant degree, so it's really a bank's blank slate, don't think that has to always be dirt, but this concept that I think Michael brought up, and, and the rest of you as well, that, just in the purposes, as alternative A, if that helps us in the discussion, the red would be that semi-circle concept, the pillars, pavers underneath potentially, and then the circle would be that 20 to 25-foot diameter where the memorial could be. So you see how that's an option of getting it closer to the street, drivers, pedestrians, it could be angled, as you'll see in these other alternatives, a number of ways, but it, it, it's a pair, it's a, there are companions there in this concept as, as one alternative. That is the location that is in dirt now, but again, could be landscape, pavers, and that is a very visible corner to the suggestion, perhaps we wouldn't want, at least on Miles, we wouldn't want parking there, perhaps, if it were that close, and maybe even that portion of Arabia. Typically, you don't park that close to the intersection anyway, so it wouldn't be a, it wouldn't be a big, big lift. So the shade tree idea was another great idea, there's also importance, I think, with the backdrop, more could be planted, but we have a few mature trees right there, they're actually larger, maturer trees on these other alternatives. So, A is kind of a discussion of that location, there is an existing circle, that, that yellow A is kind of a discussion of that location. Um, there is an existing circle, that that yellow circle now is an existing raised circle. There is a tree of some sorts in there. It's it's aged a little bit. By the way, to the north has historically been kind of a rose garden type of thing. I would admit it's not in the best shape, but it gets beat up a little bit. But in this scenario, there is a companionship and a relationship between the two, but there's a little more space, maybe to John and Gil's comments, for that longer pillar space there. And then the parking's right there adjacent. I think you still have a very good visual from the road, but maybe not quite as intimate as alternative A. One option that was discussed by the city council, and you see a sidewalk that goes to the east into the uh museum. Now, that's gated almost all of the time, but could visitors to the museum access that sidewalk, actually wherever it's placed, but this would be even more convenient. Now, the artist has recommended just directly northeast of that circle. Uh, so that also, the artist uh suggested location would be convenient for the museum and we could bring some of the young people that go through the museum to also see these two memorials. North. Oh, is that? Oh, I thought he was over there. Oh, that's even worse. Yeah, that is the, that is the soccer post. Here, I thought EJ was wrong and I was.
That's where the the plaza was originally going to be when the, in the old master plan.
Wow, that's, with all due respect to him, that's that's that that I think would be awkward there for a number of reasons, but we can get to that. I thought he was planning a little closer to the museum, but there is space there as well and you'll see these in the other alternatives. Now, this, the existing semi-circle that's there, the concrete may need some love and maybe it needs to come down and maybe it needs to be widened and some additional pavers. That circle could, may need to be adjusted, though if it's in good shape and with some dressing up, that nine eleven memorial could fit right into an existing location. Now, I could add that there could be variations. This, again, the red half-circle is the intended veterans memorial. It could still go back down on Miles and we could put the nine eleven up, up in that circle. So we'll go back to these. Uh, this one's a little more intimate and tucked in towards the museum. Kind of in that piece of of uh grass there and again, I think very visible from the roadway, not quite as as close. But intimate and close to the to the museum and access that way. And then the parking for the different events that we'll have related to the both memorials, uh, nine eleven and veterans memorial, perhaps Memorial Day. Plenty of parking available there and another good location. So if you're kind of keeping these in mind, we just went through A, B, and C.
I I, excuse me, I thought that keeping it close to the museum would would be a great idea. Because you've got the museum, now you've got the veterans park, you've got the nine eleven. I I like that idea of 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 keeping that close.
Yeah, I think there would be synergy there.
And the whole vision is if you use Miles Avenue and you decide, people, and we're trying to regentify the the downtown area. To me, it's much easier for people to choose to walk that street up to the museum and then right next to to that, the memorials. And there's plenty of parking there and if you can still utilize the parking across from the museum, there's plenty of parking there.
Even more.
And 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 so to me, any event that you can have would would be open to that ability to do that. So that's why I kind of like the area in front of of Miles on that strip of land that you, but again, the depth and the size of that, it depends because your memorial, the nine eleven memorial runs about thirty-six in diameter, thirty-six feet in diameter, if it's gonna be schematically the same as what is drawn.
I think the circle says twenty to twenty-five feet, but there is some circulation area around it.
Well, if you take the whole diameter of that, it's gonna be around thirty-some feet.
Yeah, a great point. So that option A, you can see how that could fit there, just depending how you, where you place the circle. But yeah, I, if I'll go through these and then I maybe I'll sweep through them quickly, you may want to jot down some notes and then we can go around the room again and and do that. Here's, here's again, trying to utilize the existing circle. It's kind of a focal point there, as you see from a pedestrian standpoint. This would slide the memorial, uh, again, perhaps maybe even a tad more visible than this this option previously, but similarly visible from Miles and certainly from Arabia gives us some prominence. Now, this is the one, back to Michael's questions about a parking lot on the other side. If you did something like this, you're taking both corners. They're a little separated to that end, but probably the most visible concept, knowing that Miles carries a lot more traffic than than Arabia. A little further away from the museum. So, you know, not that that's a huge walk, but it may not be quite as convenient. You know, we, there so many kids are bussed to the museum, so you just, you know, they each have to hold their hands and walk another, you know, call it four hundred feet um on a sidewalk, whereas the, this option here, for example, it would be a very easy uh transition from the museum. Anyway, this one, again, is probably the most visible. Of course, you could do the veterans memorial on the other side and the nine eleven on the other, but if you wanted to occupy both locations, those would certainly work. So um just to kind of review those, and there are versions of these, obviously, so don't feel like you're locked into any of this strictly, but as a concept, then this A puts them both on this uh northeast corner, Miles and Arabia. Again, those could even be flip-flop perhaps, but th- this felt good when we first looked at it. This one would probably provide the most space, maybe this one and D for the veterans memorial, but we would size it accordingly. For example, those pillars on that West Covina are probably ten feet apart. Maybe we put them six feet apart instead of ten. I think they would fit in any version of these. So that's one that kind of gives it almost its veterans memorial park feel, because they're all kind of packaged there. Then this one, again, kind of spreads them out a little bit, but some visibility, and I think I have an E. So happy to flip through these again and it 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 could be where, just going back, if if you wanted that yellow circle, it's called the nine eleven memorial up in the circle that's existing and have it here. There are many hybrids to these. Let me just see what I had on these other, no, I'm sorry. Well, that's kind of the blank slate there. So again, while we just impregnated ideas into your mind on locations, it could really go about anywhere. Uh, as stated, you get closer to the active place surface, it seems less reverent. So this is probably the corner to to focus on. So Madam Chair, again, do you want to kind of go around the room and and well, whoops, I'll try to get to a
Well, looking at all the these slides here, I'm more favoring um A now, that Commissioner Maruho mentioned that it's closer to the street, which would mean more views from the whole community, not just going into a park that already appears convoluted and not everybody goes to that side of the park. Initially, I had liked the one that was in the corner of of where the kids play, but then I started thinking, oh, no. The kids are gonna go out there, start doing their thing, and it's probably best to keep them together. And at the same time, um, alternative A, you could move one of those to the other corner and make a nice viewable walkway to go into the other corner so that you you have something to do, because everybody's talking about walking through the park and walking to the um museum. You know, you're, you'll be able to design something to kind of give us that walkway to the museum after, so.
Is this kind of what you're trying to?
No, see where you have the the circle, the red circle? Move that to the other, go back to A. Yeah, go back to A. And you see where the the yellow circle's at? Just move it to the corner. That way, the metal ground would be an open area to kind of walk through.
The other corner, oh, okay, so make it a corridor essentially.
There you go, and you could plant the tree, there's already trees there. You know, from the street, if you do that straight angle, which people are suggesting the pillars, that could be a well-lit area. I mean, I could, I could see a lot going, but the issue would be, like Commissioner Maruho said, is well, we need to see what's gonna fit and how much space is gonna be needed in order to determine that that would be the appropriate site.
If it helps with scale, so typically the parking lot spaces are nine or ten by twenty. So let's call it nine. So I don't know if I have a pointer on this, but those, that that likely, that width of parking right there is probably seventy feet wide. So the dirt looks to be maybe two-thirds of that. It's probably fifty?
It's probably fifty feet. That's what's scaling out on the maps too.
So probably fifty. So it would fit, uh, that even the thirty-five, you know, the walk around the memorial sliding at that direction, that dirt area would accommodate
Yes, and and again, like I see, I see what what the Public Arts Commission is doing out in the community, you know, all this artwork going all over the place. And and this is what we want, right? We want everybody to see it. We don't, I mean, from my perspective is that I have to drive in, park in order to walk in to see the memorial. It's one of those that you don't always have that time and because my child goes to the school that's right behind this park, it's a very highly-traffic street, Miles Park for us. I drive that every day when I drop my kids off. So it it'd be something that we could see from the street view or decide to stop and say, hey, let's walk. Let's go see your brother. Let's go see my uncle, you know, if the placard's there, pay memorials to to them.
If it's, it's great, great comments and I've jotted those down. Another one that resonates with what you just said, we do have folks experiencing, experiencing homelessness that hang out there. This is farther away from where they typically hang out and that might be a positive as well, to have it a little farther down. In addition to the visibility from the road.
And it remains close to the museum where they could still walk and and do the walk and the kids could, you know, stay safe on the side of the street, so that would be my recommendation.
I'm also a fan of alternative A. My only suggestion would be to maybe swap them, have the nine eleven memorial on the corner and then the veterans one going along Miles, since they're gonna be really tall, long, tall pillars.
And there's length there for that?
So that way you can drive through it and it'd be well-lit. And I know that both features will be utilizing light of some sort. I know that the uh nine eleven one is gonna be utilizing some sort of light to backlight the stars or something like that. So I think leading into the downtown area, if you have those two beautiful murals right there, would be an awesome kind of like lead into the rest of what we can see in 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 downtown on Miles. Other than that, I mean, alt A was my, was my face favorite one. I also was a fan of alternative B. Do you mind putting that one up? Just because we're already kind of utilizing um the roundabout that's already built there in the park and if we're gonna do a round mural or yeah, round mural, um, that would kind of flow best with the park with how it's kind of set up now. Um, and going back to the veterans one, the length of it, if we do go the pillar route, um, I think those would look nice, kind of like you mentioned, spaced out. West Covina has them about ten feet and so for you to do the ten feet, so it 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 creates like a more grander piece. Um, I think having it, having the freedom to widen it would be best for that.
Yeah, and so if it were more like A, certainly there's the length uh for that. I will say, like from a, like a park designer standpoint, this this would feel, this one right here would feel like this is, it was always planned that way. See how you have that rectangle and the circle? Uh, it kind of has a little feng shui, in my opinion. But either of those work certainly.
I I am a fan of alternative B as well. I wrote A, B, and C, but with C though.
D and E and that, nice.
And C, so all of them, I'm a fan of all of them. With alternative C, though, if we were to keep it kind of cornered and close to the museum, would we be putting any sort of walkway or pathway leading up to the nine, I'm sorry, the veterans?
We need, good point. Uh, that paver concept would be at least, I think you'd need a walk from the parking lot, we'd need to guide you, because people would cut that grass. They wouldn't walk the square or the rectangle. So yes, I think a lot of that would be, I think even in my vision, even the the A option would be a lot of hard surface uh right in front of it. For the walkability.
Okay. And which placement did the artist prefer?
So on this one, uh, on the, on the other side of Arabia, about where the sea is, if you just head your, head head east, there's a little space, that kind of crescent ship space, is that right, Larry? You, she'll walk up to the screen behind her with her
Oh, sure.
carpal tunnel hand and um Okay. And again, you feel there's some feng shui there with regard to the s- the swoop and the spacing, the pedestrian aspect of that. But the, right, currently the soccer goals, EJ's point, are just immediately to the left of that sidewalk.
Yeah.
You would have soccer balls hit it, I think, sometimes.
Yeah, definitely. I guess one of my other concerns is if um we were to go just fully on Miles, uh, so option A, would it create any potential safety risk with kids walking to and from the museum, like trying to cross a parking lot? Uh, so I was just trying to keep that in mind as well.
I think they would walk them down the sidewalk on Miles. Um, they could bring them through that that northerly gate and bring them down through the parking lot. That that's also safe. That might even be safer than walking along Miles. We could guide them to that, but they would probably best determine how they got them there. Uh, just to make sure and to restate it then, so this concept of that veterans memorial, the red crescent would slide to the west with swap and your your vision would be elongated there, creating some space, and then move the nine eleven more a little bit to the circle, kind of like it was originally planned on Carrion and and Jackson.
Correct, yeah, so it'd be closer to the corner of Arabia and Miles.
If I'd thought ahead, I would have had the PC here and we could have just moved things around, but I I'm visualizing, but now I've confirmed that. Uh, thank you.
So uh, my preference is B. I like that it's a little tucked away and protected and we don't have to worry about parking in front. Um, and then my second uh choice is D.
That's a newer, yeah. And again, that circle is almost homemade for it, so you see some of that feng shui there. As if I'm speaking Chinese. Any, well.
I really like the idea of um option A and E. I like the idea of having having them at the corner of Miles in Arabia, right? But I do worry about the soccer park. Was it A when they were both in that same uh dirt area? Yes, okay, so I like that idea of having them in that same area, maybe um at each corner. My only concern would be, oh, and I love that idea about having like a sitting area in the in the center maybe and then utilizing the trees that are already there. My only concern with that would be the lighting for the nine eleven. Um, I know that it says that, you know, it's supposed to light up a certain way during the evening, so I don't know how the lighting would work with having both there and if they're too close to each other.
I'm so glad we're having this discussion. It's a great point. We cha- we are challenged sometimes with accent lighting because of streetlights.
That's, yes, that was my second.
We're lighting up these transformers over here. We actually turned off one of the lights in the park because it was interfering with the uplighting. So it it, any of these will work, but we may need to, to your very wise point, and we'll need to get with the artist to get that backlit look, we may have to do something with the lighting on Miles, which isn't the safest approach, but maybe we have to take the lighting down to allow to get that effect. And I don't think I'd thought about that before. That Walnut Creek example, by the way, they must have, it is not a well-lit area except for that. It's like they intentionally wanted that to be lit and you could maybe recall that. You can see that it's it's a kind of a darker area.
And and I love that about it and I I felt like that would look so beautiful along that that Miles area towards the front and that sidewalk, and I would love for it to be on the soccer park area, but only because I feel like it would just add more to the to the to the aesthetic of the park and, but yeah, I worry about the the soccer park. Because then I feel like everything else is just kind of like cramped up on this one area.
So have them on the corner, but not that corner, the the west corner, yeah, which was E.
So if I may, the lighting for the nine eleven, it's basically freestanding lights with a distance from the circular metal piece that when the, yeah, exactly. So it's some distance to that metal piece to be able to shine the light, so it looks like stars. So that design was done because we had trees there in the previous location, so it would be hidden behind that. But now, again, that's also something that may require But now, again, that's also something that may require some design revision because it will be trip hazard. And then also on that corner of the Miles and, and, um, alternative A. Imagine if you have a couple hundred people gathering for Veterans Day. We won't be able to fit anybody there, so everybody will spill over onto the street. So we can do a street closure, but it's not enough room. Anything goes in, inside the park, it will have more room for events. Because I'm assuming we have at least a couple hundred at any of our events, if not more.
It's a good comment. The one on the lower left, for example, you see that grass area behind, that's where everybody gathered and then they walked around. The same thing with the lower right. Yep, there is a gathering issue. Now, Miles wouldn't be very difficult, Arabia be very easy to close, Miles not really difficult, but there's, there's traffic there, so that's a consideration. I'm glad you spoke up, Leila, cuz some of these others may provide more gathering space. Even that one, some perhaps even more, as you see to the north. So many, many minds putting together, help us think things through. And the lighting that Gabriela brought up is, is still important cuz, yeah, even that one. So there's this balancing act between the visibility from the vehicular traffic and the idea of having eighty, hundred people in front of it. I think this would still work, but we likely would close probably at least Arabia. At least Arabia and you'd kind of be off and we could, we could tip that, well, of course, this idea also of swi- swapping them. Interesting concept. Well, not that it's ever a hundred percent clear, but. Is there anything more from Gabriela?
I'm, I'm in disagreement with most of these placements. My, my favorite is so far the A, I'm sorry, C, which is the last one you had shown. And the, the two could be flipped or reconfigured in that space and I guess just my thinking on some of these. Alt A, I think it just crams everything between a parking lot and a sidewalk. And with respect, I'm, I'm not a fan of making things car-centric. I think this is a walkable street. I think if you do drive, you can park in that parking lot. Cramping it between a parking lot and that street, I think is disrespectful to what we're trying to memorialize as this alumni. I think it should be in the park. I think it should be an invitation to go farther into the park rather than to just drive by. Oh, yeah, those are those pillars, to actually enter the park, use the space. And to actually have a place to gather with either some existing trees or use the, the access from the museum if the campus is opened up that direction. So that's why my favorite would be C. In any of the ones where you've got the circle for the nine eleven memorial in the circle of the concrete. I think that's gonna be problematic because it's not designed as a space to walk through, to traverse, as like a crossroads. The memorial would be right dead center and so it'd be people just walking by it. Or walking through it and traipsing through it, not necessarily reflecting and taking the time to think about what, what it actually is. Rather than it's just one thing blocking your straight line to the canopies or the, you know, any other part of the park. So yeah, mine, my would be to go with C. I'm not a fan of A at all. And I'm not a fan of putting the nine eleven in that circle just for the sake of it being a circle.
And to add some virtues there, I think the lighting issue brought up would not be the case here, would be competing with that. Yet I believe, and we could make sure it's the case, it might mean an adjustment of a tree, but driving on Miles, you would see this still. It just would be set off a hundred and fifty feet, a hundred feet.
I just think if you put it between a parking lot and the street, it's not a part of the park at that point.
Yeah, and, and I think that's a wise comment. These are other examples where that was done and it worked, but that doesn't mean it's the best idea. I think these bottom two are at an intersection. And that was what the artist originally had, in fact, if anything, Jackson and Dr. Carrion carry tons more traffic. It did benefit, there's some large palm trees that are there now, as Leila mentioned, that provided some backdrop. But, quite well taken on, on both of those. John's up, huh?
Yeah, I'm up. I really like B and C, but now that I was listening to EJ. I, I like A and B where the red, where the veterans would be. I think that, that keeps a little of sobriety, but it's, it's by itself. And maybe taking the nine eleven and moving it straight across into the, into where it would be, where C, where the red was there, maybe in that corner there. You know, and it, it feels like it, you have to go see it. It feels like you can sit there, especially with the, the veterans, if we do something that is in the same flavor of West Covina. You'd be able to sit there, there's the grass. You have the parking lot, which doesn't interfere. Yeah, that, that would be.
So where the red is now would be the, the yellow circle, the nine eleven. But then utilize this rectangle somewhat like Michael was saying, just a little length there.
And it gives you plenty of space between, if you have a lot of people there for an event or that.
Oh, yeah, north of that red, whereas now you could fit five hundred people.
Yeah. And it keeps it closer to the museum is which, what I said too, I, I like that feeling of that.
Great, kills up.
What's that? Well, it's a while back, yeah.
Which, where was that, John? All those little circles there? There's concrete pads there still, that's what it was.
Yeah. I'm up, okay. So, so as I said before, my, my take was there only because of the fact that the A part, it's visible constantly. It's a reminder. People don't have to stop all the time, but it's a reminder. In, in terms of where EJ's talking about, I'm not, I'm not against it, it's a possibility. But if you're gonna do that, to me, you'd have to separate the C part. I'd rather, first of all, I don't wanna do the yellow circle right at the roundabout. To me, that's just, wouldn't fit, at least for me. If you wanted to do any, you could split them and you might be able to get one-on-one there. And then use the, the other portion of the, the park if, if that comes to being. But then again, the city is gonna have to make the, all I'm concerned is, we keep it up here. I don't want anything back there because there's too much happening back there in the evenings. And I'd rather have public safety in terms of driving by and knowing that things are okay. You know, when, when police have to venture around that area, especially in the evenings, make sure things, if you get a call. These things are more protected up front than they are in the back. And that's, that was my only concern when I was thinking in terms of up here in the front. It would keep, I, in my opinion, it would keep the public safety a little bit more in regards to what you can do with police coming around and especially. But once you turn into Arabia and you start going in deep, then, then things can change. And then naturally, all the soccer fields, anything on, on the west side of, of Arabia, I, I wouldn't put anything. Cuz kids are kids and families are families, they're gonna show up and they're gonna wanna play soccer. And balls are gonna be going all over the place, so I'd rather, that's why I kind of insisted on something up in, in front. Especially ne- near the, near the museum. And the second part of this, when parking comes to, to being whatever it is, we have to utilize the parking that's across the street from, from the museum. Because you have parking there that's available. You also have parcel of land right behind that too. So that, that would be, you know, so, you know, I'm okay with any, but the idea was for me is to keep it up centrally towards Miles. People starting to visit our city. You know, they're gonna wanna see some of this. I know I've been down to Veterans Park in Coachella already and they've, they've jumped on it so fast. Everybody calls it Veterans Park, so, and naturally, it's like anything else. We, we definitely need both, both, however soon, we need to get something started on both of them. Anyway.
I, I thank you, I, I just went back to the, that master plan. So that was, was thought through and decided. So Madam Chair, I'm jumping ahead, but I don't know if any of those that first spoke listened to everybody else and thought maybe they've tweaked their minds a little bit or have any further input, but from there, we're happy to take your guidance and anything that you come up with. This is a, a legal matter, we don't have a quorum of community services and so, you know, any type of, this is informational only. There is a quorum of the Arts Commission, so if there is a vote needed, I think you do have a budget matter you wanted to address with them as well. But when you two speak, it's, it's input rather than formal votes, if that makes sense. But however you wanna kind of wrap us up.
Yeah, I just wanted to say I really liked what John said about, cuz I preferred B, but how you mentioned moving the circle to the other side. I think that would be nice as well and I really liked what Leila said about making sure there's enough space for gathering.
So in that scenario, that yellow circle would move to the east and hug up a little bit closer to the library. They both have their spaces in that scenario, but would be close enough, I think that they're, they're, you know, they're paired. But maybe, yeah, if there was any thought now that others have spoken on the other end of the dais about these. Or still there?
I'll go. So I'm still a fan of alternative B and I do appreciate the comments that John made. I would like again for the, the veterans memorial to be again in a bit wider space. And if we were to lower that yellow dot near the, was it that little concrete circle? I think that would like flow really nicely, so as you're driving to the park, you have both really tall features.
Or, or right where that circle is.
There's a concrete circle to your left, right?
More central. No, the, the bottom right, where that exists, yeah, in that general area.
Yeah, we would remove that and create the, center it in there as a concept.
There's a stage here somewhere.
Yeah.
And that way they'll both still be very visible from the street as you're driving by or walking by.
Where's the stage from there? Where's the stage? There's a stage here. There's the stage.
Ricardo, do you have any thoughts on that slight adjustment to things?
No, no thoughts. The only concern again, and then I'll make very clear, is that, you know, I, I go to these parks often. Due to my kids playing soccer and a lot of events and then thinking about the events that would happen in the future with the Tamala Festival and all that. Again, I, I would say that A would be the most visual. I'm not saying it's the most appropriate cuz that would be great. But again, what would it cost to ensure that these two memorials will not be vandalized? Because that park is really known for high traffic of transients in the area. Due to my employment, I also deal with a lot of going into that park. So I'm very familiar with this park and that's why I would still keep A. But again, it's, it's what's best for the community, it's best what veterans think too. You know, if they wanna stay at the park and, and have more time to be there and like you mentioned, the gathering of, of people. B would probably be the best if we need to gather large amounts of people. But if you're talking about closing streets, then A will still be my choice. Because during the Tamala Festival, during any type of event, we're always closing streets in this event, you know, right? And it's for safety and, and it makes it fun for people to walk and feel free to go to wherever they need to go.
I've got a comment. I, I do like John's idea of splitting those two on either side. I, I worry about having it again at A simply because everyone has to navigate a parking lot to get through there. There's two driveway entrances. In the background of any group photo, you're gonna have, you're gonna have parks, you're gonna have parked cars. Be part of every image there. Just moving it to the other side of the parking lot, I think, will change a little bit of that. You'll still have cars in the background, you can't get away with that. I'm not anti-car, I don't sound like it today. But yeah, I think John's discussion about B, kind of like the, the combination B, C, I think that works best.
Great comment about photos, you know, there'll be all kinds and these you would primarily see greenery and trees in this scenario. Particularly the nine eleven would have a backdrop. Rather than cars. Well. It appears there's a general consensus. Gabriela, however you feel about B, if the veterans memorial were that red area and then the yellow circle moved into that other area closer to the museum, that work for you?
I like that idea, I do actually, and keeping in mind the lighting for the, I think Leila mentioned something about in the original design for the, the nine eleven design, the lighting in the back. Is that something that, I'm just trying to figure out, the back, what's gonna be behind it? It's gonna be the, the museum, the little library, is that what's gonna be behind it if we were to go that route?
So it's, it looks like in the aerial, we have a distance between where the lights goes and where the buildings are. So it is, looks like it has enough room.
Okay, yeah, I was just thinking about the safety about those lights and where were they gonna be placed and what's gonna be behind it.
So that's the other thing, we may, the artists may need to redesign the lights in a way that is not as up the ground. So that's why the additional cost to redesigning may, may occur, which is, we think about twenty thousand dollars or more. So at this point also, we would like you to know that, that may happen.
Okay, but I do, I do like the, uh, thank you for clarifying that. And I do like the idea of, of having them in the grass area, thinking about the sitting and the gathering space. Thinking about the pictures in the back and the parking lot. So I, I do like alternative B for that. And then just knowing where the lighting would be for that one, for safety, that's my thoughts.
I'm sensing a consensus. There may be a little bit of, and, and we will share all of this obviously with the council. But if those pillar concepts with the seals was also somewhat of a, of a consensus, some pavers that could be named. You could say all that could be achieved here. So unless there's some further comments, I might turn it back to Leila. Do we need maybe a summary?
Has there been any discussion about a change of name to the park if you're doing a veterans memorial or veterans, you know?
That had not been discussed, you know, Miles Avenue's kind of been expanded with years to be buildings, you know, the scout office was here. We have the YMCA up there, the theater was down the other side. So while we've called it Miles Avenue Park for quite some time, maybe this little area could be changed if that's your recommendation and.
We, we have changed the name of the park once in the past. It was called College Park at one point, briefly. With the hopes of bringing the college into town and now it's named again for General Miles.
Yeah, that, that's, that's the historical portion, General Miles. That's the reason why Miles was named, General during World War Two.
No, 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 no. Indian wars, Spanish-American war.
Okay, well, I'm correct if I'm, but I knew it was General Miles.
He owned about four hundred acres east of town between the two Indian reservations.
And what's significant, what I like, is that the Indian Women's Club, which was built back in the early nineteen hundreds, is kitty-cornered to that. That's why I'm trying to, we're, I was trying to capture every, because that could become an iconic historical place. That, that, that women's club right there on the King, King, King and Miles. That was the corner of, the, the women's club, which is the church now. Is, is there still a church there? Still, still a church? That, that used to be the Indian Women's Club that was built back in nineteen twelve or thereabouts.
Interesting.
And it was the first women's club in the valley, Coachella Valley. And, and that's why, to me, my significance in terms of lighting and everything else is because if you can capture that down Mile- because if you can capture that down miles with the museum, the Indian Women's Club, and then down the street, you've got the memorial set. It could really light up the area for people to visit. That was my thought, my thought. Because I, I was thinking, Indian Women's Club, there's a church there now. But does anybody know if it's still operating as a church?
Oh, it is.
Still a church?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Is it the? Yeah.
They, they switched now.
But now Pastor Sal's probably the old Victory Church, right?
They swapped, if that's what we're thinking of. Well, one went to Bliss and one stayed here.
But anyway, if there is a way to capture that building, because that becomes a historical significance to the Coachella Valley, not just Indio, because it was built in 1912, 10, whatever, back in that period of time. And so you, you would have a really long spot area of, of significance in terms of the parks. Then the parks become really important, in my opinion.
Well, and to that point of park naming, so that east-west sidewalk, I'm kind of, I gotta finally have a, you can't see it on the screen, but that little quadrant south of that sidewalk going east-west could be named something different. I don't know why not. It'd be up to the council, obviously, but that's a consideration, certainly. Well, I, I think if we're able to present all of your comments, and I've taken a lot of notes here, but a slight variation of this, where the Veterans Memorial occupies that space, the 9/11 goes into the other corner. The idea, and we'll show these to the council as well, but the idea of having pillars, maybe that West Covina is an example. And even after this meeting, whenever you talk as a collective body, you never want to copy your colleagues, but you're certainly able to email staff. For example, EJ brought up materials. John's got some great artist background. If you're thinking those memorials ought to be a certain color of granite or should be a stained concrete, your input doesn't have to stop with this meeting. Feel free to email me if you want to go through Leila, and we can continue to refine that. The more urgent timely one, timeliness matter, was the 9/11. Because if we're able to pinpoint that location, we will have a ribbon cutting to which all of you would be invited on 9/11. And it looks like if the City Council agrees with your recommendation, it would be right there where that, that circle is, a cement circle is. I think that's a picnic table right near the museum. So if that happened and the City Council voted that way, none of you would be very upset? Okay, well, let's see what they decide. Is there any further input on, you know, the style of this thing? You know, these, some good lighting at night, I think is critical. The verticality, I think it has more presence, the taller they are. But at some point, you probably get too, I don't know what the footing needs to be, but something like eight feet probably seems reasonable. A bench, some bench or benches, yeah?
I have a question. On the West Covina Veterans Memorial, what is written in the black section of the mural? Do you know, Madam Chair?
I don't know. We will find that out, maybe.
I believe it's, it's different branches, and then it has probably, there's someone who's either passed. I think those are names and ranks.
Yeah, okay. And I've done.
Although I think, I think they're by war. I can kind of read out, one of them, the one in the middle says something war.
And I know this sounds, I hope it doesn't sound like a cop-out. It's not a bad idea, but having done a couple of these before, okay, the parents live there, they live nearby, the name, you forget somebody, we misspell a name, I mean, this isn't granite. So I would recommend we stay away from names. It's up to the council, obviously. It is, it's a logistical difficulty. You'd have to have some real tight parameters. We have to do a lot of research. You'll never get all of them on the first time, so you're paying someone to come out and engrave again. But I believe that's what it is. I think those are names of people that lost their lives that were from West Covina under each one of those branches of service.
I have a question. I also noticed on almost every photo, only five pillars, right? How many branches are they in the military?
Well, six now.
Six.
We have a Space Force.
Yeah. And then we have the Coast Guard that they're gonna be honored in any way.
And, and I've done one where there was the Merchant Marine. So it, we'd need to get that determined. If you have a recommendation on that front, that would be helpful.
I'm just saying, we want to make sure we're honoring everybody and at the same time not leave someone out. And I'm just noticing five pillars on almost everything, and I thought that there were six.
It's the most common. We have the SpaceX thing now, is that it? And I have one where I did, we did the Merchant Marine. And I can't remember why, but somehow, I think they were determined as veterans. If they were in the Merchant Marine during the war, World War II, they were veterans. And so that, we added that. In fact, that's actually this one, right? So you're right, right there. We added a seal for the Merchant Marine.
For the, excuse me, for the look, I really like the black stone. And then for the personalization, I like your idea of the pavers as opposed to on the actual memorial, just utilizing the pavers.
Yeah, that was gonna make, that was gonna be my suggestion as well. I do like the simplicity of the, I forgot what other city it was, but the nighttime columns that were lit from underneath. That one, so something simple like that. But I do like the setup of the other ones as well. I just want to move away from like any sort of text or names or things on it. So it was just, we're acknowledging the branch and.
Yeah.
But, but the names, people could, you know, buy the brick and, and be on there.
No, this one on the top left, I like that, too. I think in that space that we were talking about would look good, too, especially with the flag. But then we have to think about the flag being put up and taken down every day. So that could be one of those situations where.
We would put a light on it, but those flags in our, in our climate, they, they don't last very long.
Yeah, no, I know.
Yeah, I like that you've almost all mentioned it, but the one on the lower right, as nice as it is, it just has the letter, it just says Navy. It doesn't have the seal. Both could be done, perhaps, but they didn't put the seal up, which almost all the, well, the upper right one doesn't, as far as I know.
Yeah, it doesn't either.
I did like the seals as well.
I like the seal.
Yeah, it's a little more formal. By the way, at this, every Veterans Memorial, we had the local band play the songs of every branch of the service. It was kind of, so everybody would stand that was in the Navy, and they would play that one. Everybody, it's, it's, these are neat. These are really neat. Okay, well, I think that's been fabulous input. Whether you wanted formal action, Leila, on the matter regarding the budget?
Sure. So with what Mr. Montgomery said, the, basically, the recommendation is that the Public Arts Commission, since we don't have a quorum from Community Services Commission, we would like you to make a recommendation to the City Council regarding the location, which is the B with modification. And also, a request, additional cost, maybe $20,000 or more to be approved, to be added to the original budget, which is $130,000 for only the 9/11 memorial. The Veterans Memorial has not been decided on the budget. And so that will be something later on. It comes before the commissions if it is, if, if we are using public arts fund.
Gentlemen here have asked a question about what the additional $20,000 is for. I believe it's for extra costs and additional lighting or?
So the additional lighting and then also different location. Now, there is sprinklers, there's grass, needs to be removed back there. There was no such a thing. It's already been handled. Also conduits for electricity, even if we are not, the conduit was there for the public safety. So those are, could be up to $20,000 or more. We still don't know it. So when we talk to the artists, we can get that more refined.
Okay. Do you guys will be writing a proposal to show the extra cost? It's not just, you're giving an estimate not based on what you've seen out there yet, right? So it's just, just in case? It's not, you're gonna be an extra cost just because we're moving?
It's gonna be extra cost. How much, we don't know. But that's $20,000 is close to the reality. But again, it may be a little bit more, a little bit less when we show the location to the artist and he can tell us. But we will get a detailed additional budget. It's not like just a lump sum.
And we're not under contract with, with the artist yet, correct?
We are under contract, so that contract also needs to be.
So this is essentially an allowance for, say, a change order at this point for changing the design?
So exactly. It will be a change order. We want the commissions to be aware of, because eventually it's the City Council that who does the budget appropriation.
Okay. I'll move per what you've just said, going with option alternate B, moving the 9/11 memorial slightly to the southeast, to that other grass area, and also adding an additional $20,000 to the budget for site conditions.
Or more.
Or more, she said.
Or more. We just don't want to come back again here to, to stop the process. We want to go.
Open-ended or more?
So it's not gonna be $100,000, but just if it is $25,000, we don't come back.
Okay, we'll up that to $25,000?
Okay.
Do I need to restate my, my motion there for you? We're good.
Well, I, the recommendation would be, right now, or not to exceed is up to $130,000. We want to extend that to essentially $155,000 in order to allow, to see what the artist comes back with. Anything more than that, of course, we'd come back to you to ask for more money. But for right now, so we could have that wiggle room, start designing, start telling us what these costs would be.
Okay, so $155,000, that's what the, okay.
All right, I'll, I'll second that.
Yeah, I'm gonna do a roll call to both. Commissioner Marujo?
Yes.
Commissioner Puthome?
Yes.
Commissioner Newmeyer?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Armenta?
Yes.
And Chairperson Sanchez?
Yes.
Motion carries. I, Councilmember Gutron's here with us tonight. I just wanted to see if you had anything you'd like to say.
I'm very impressed, oop, sorry. Is it, can you hear me now? Okay. Sorry, EJ, thank you. No, no, it's always welcome. I'm very impressed how you were involved. This is what we need to see. And you need to encourage those that don't make it to say you missed a good meeting. This is what we want to see. The job does not need to be carried on the shoulders of staff. The job is staff to facilitate ideas, vision, and how we're doing. I've been texting everybody. He goes, you guys missed a really good meeting. I hope you see it. Because I've been seeing, I sat in this chair for 20 years dealing with planning commissioners. I missed every Wednesday, and every other Wednesday I was at a council meeting. They, nobody here had that privilege of seeing me, but you guys did really well. I'm extremely impressed of the thoughtness, the dialogue, and how you guys brought it into form. So I think there's gonna be something very proud to be of that. I've been wanting this vision for various reasons, because I go through this community even before in my career position, which that's not the priority, is just being a person of this community, that they've been dying to see this. I've been pushing it, pushing it, pushing it, not for me, but for those before us. There's not just the veterans that are moving in. We have tons of veterans that are moving into our city. And when people come in, they want to know where we stand, how we should respect that. And you've taken that spot. The community of City of Coachella, the City of La Quinta, Palm Desert, Indian Wells have always taken that step. But being the largest city in the valley, we have history that goes back from the late 1800s until now. When, when it was just a town, when it was just a stop, we have that history. EJ made a perfect example about General Miles. That attract the community and the respect, regardless of whatever it is, as veterans making a difference. And that's what you're gonna do. The 9/11, it's something that happened in everyone's history. Everybody's taken a different spot and how to respect it. We obviously made an investment of heart to bring it to recognition in our community. So my hat's off to you. Please continue to have that drive. Please don't be silent. It's one day, one evening, two hours that you meet, but you're making a difference. Please don't lose that momentum. And, and find people that have that same heart. Don't just depend on staff or your elected officials. You're out there. You're ambassadors of the community you live in. Bring people that will have that same drive. But thank you so much for a good job.
Thank you. Okay, there are no further comments. I'll adjourn this meeting.
I've, I've got one comment to bring up for the next meeting. Glenn Miller asked if we would consider in the future not bringing multiple options to council to choose from, that we would consider going with our best foot forward, like we had before this option, just as a matter of discussion for next time. If, if ever we have an RFP and we have two, three, four options that we're kind of on the fence about, that's fine. But he did ask if we could come with a strong recommendation, one way or the other, in the future.
I have one quick question. We were talking about Miles Avenue, under that bench for West Covina. Couldn't we put Miles Veteran Memorial Park? I mean, even if it's just those two little areas, it doesn't mean the whole park is the park, but just in that, that little just quadrant right there.
If I can further make a comment, it'd be nice if we can possibly try to renovate or do more for the Rose Garden. There's a rose, there's a couple rows of rose bushes, or you know that. But historically, those rose bushes have been there since I, since I was born. And people used to go there all the time on that rose. They used to have, you wouldn't believe the amount of roses that were found on that strip, long way. So if you're gonna do anything, see if you can do something to, just to reinvigorate the, the Rose Garden, as we used to call it. But anyway, it's because a lot of people went through that and.
Yeah, I've been here four and a half years, and we've planted twice. So they get beat up.
I know.
One year, we had them stolen. So I think, I don't know, I'm guessing 18 or something like that, almost all of them, they just picked them up and stole them.
Yeah, but, back in the day, that, that was a big, big thing for a lot of families to come through the, the park.
Beautiful stretch.
And it's, it's gonna be fairly close anyway, so it would, it would help with the landscape.
I do have a couple comments. If we're gonna be kind of touching on the veterans' name, I do like the idea, but maybe, I'm not sure the technicalities of the names, but I was thinking maybe like a Veterans Plaza or Veterans Square, like at Miles Park, just because it's kind of, we're identifying what's already there.
So it's still the park, but a portion of the park is dedicated this way?
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
I like that.
And then my last comment would be, it's unrelated to anything we've discussed today, but it ties into my role as Community Services Commissioner. I've been working with a couple local community leaders and local businesses to bring a wellness event to the City of Indio. So I've collaborated with Tap House to create the Tap Into Wellness Event. It's gonna be starting on September 20th. It's gonna be running from 7:00 AM to 12:00 PM. It's gonna include a 5K yoga, a booty pump class, that's what they called it, Pilates, as well as music and other various vendors. So I'm excited to be a part of that and collaborate to help ensure that that comes into fruition. So it's gonna be held on September 20th at Tap House in their little beer garden area outside of Center Stage. And yeah, so it's gonna be the Tap Into Wellness Event. So hope to see you all there.
Are there any other comments? Okay. With that, I will end this, adjourn this meeting at 6:58 PM.